Next on the agenda we have the approval of the Resolution 13-013 for all system bridge for fiscal year 2013 to 2014. Do y'all have a copy of that resolution? It's the Resolution for the Off Bridge System for fiscal year 2013 to 2014. Code of Federal Regulations or intact by United States Congress mandates all structures defined as bridges located on all public roads shall be inspected, rated for safe load, passed and posted in accordance with the National Bridge Inspection Standard, and that an inventory of these bridges be maintained by each state, in each state. So this is something that the Public Jury has already passed, and the town has one of those, and it's in reference to the Lions Hills Bridge.
Mr. Coleman will give the updates here in a minute.
We'll just pass the Resolution prior to this. I entertain a motion this time to pass a Resolution supporting updating and repairing the Lions Hills Bridge. Motion made by Councilwoman Sam for second, second by Councilwoman Wade, all in favor of State by saying aye. Any opposed? So the motion carries now. Next we have IMS. Mr. Harper is here with us from IMS. We're going to pass a Resolution for the Airport Project, but first he has a CIP for the next five years, a capital improvement plan for the next five years this time.
Yes ma'am.
Mr. Harper from IMS, would you please stand, and you can come face us.
All right, I'll stay right here. The Town Councilman has to submit a CIP to FAA every year to maintain their eligibility for grants from both the LADLDT FAA. And so this year we've actually have programmed several projects. For 2014, we're talking about rehabilitating runway pavement, taxiway pavement, apron pavement, which is, we have an available entitlement of $600,000. The LADLDT is talking about kicking in another $120,000. And what's interesting event of this is that if we go ahead and design this now, there's an extra possible $400,000 that the FAA is thinking about kicking in. So we're really highly motivated to take that.
Additional, you said additional $400,000?
Additional $400,000.
On top of how much already?
Uh, 600, 7, it works out to $787,000. So we've been busy trying to shake the tree for that. In 2015, we're talking about doing RSA improvements, which is runway safety area improvements to improve the airport. 2016, we were working on the road defense and actually constructing those improvements that we designed. 2017, we're doing an airport layout plan. 2018, we're designing parallel taxiways, and we've got areas. So total for the program through 2018 is $3,216,000 and change for the next five years. So rate is the jab in front of you on the Resolution, so that you, we can actually submit this to the FAA, so we can be in line with you.
And that's 3.2 million over the next?
That's 3.2, 3,216,750.
Over the next five years?
Five years.
So that's awesome planning, but may I say, Airport is looking great right now.
Just a matter of fact, you just completed the obstruction survey, and so that we can actually put that project underway. As part of that, create announcements to make in the newspaper about that.
Okay, any questions about the Airport grant, or the money, or the funding?
We have gotten the truth, all of the things that was in the way, that's been took care of.
Obstruction?
Obstruction, that we've actually done the survey to identify all of the trees that need to come down, and we're getting ready to do that project to remove those trees.
Well, they were quite a company.
They're, they're quite old. They were great on their place in one natural land, that's true.
We had business to the Airport about a year or two ago that actually flew in for a brand new, and they were stating how nice and well improved the Airport is, so we'd like to give credit where credit is due, thank you for the good work. You want to come to Councilwoman Wade, Councilwoman Jenkins?
Not at this time.
Okay, so at this time, we have a Resolution. Number 13-014, Resolution for the Town of Homer. Title 2 of the Louisiana Revised Chapter 1950, Revised Cities, Towns, and Estates and Other Political Subdivision of this State. They separately join, acquire, establish, construct, expand, own lease, control, equip, improve, maintain, operate, regulate, and police, Air Force, landfills, or the use of aircraft. It would be additions for the CIP to make, to ensure the CIP plan will be implemented at a price of $3.2 million over the next five years. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the Resolution 13-014. Motion made by Councilwoman Sam for second.
Uh, second.
Second by Councilwoman Jenkins, all in favor of State by saying aye. Any opposed? So the motion carries. Thank you so much, Mr. Harper, for the enlightening, enlightening presentation. Thank you. Next we have the Horizon Water Tower Lease Agreement. I don't know which one of y'all want to take over the Horizon Water Tower. What? Mr. Coleman?
With regards to the water tower, at the current time, I believe that we do have a temporary agreement in place. There's still some issues about contractual liability that we're still working on to hammer out a long-term agreement, but I believe Mr. Coleman can answer some of those questions or respond better to it.
Yeah, basically Horizon wants to put a antenna on the Blue Water Tank up there, and they're willing to, as I understand it, pay the town about $460 a month in lease money, and they want a five, they're talking about a five-year lease, and they're talking about a 3% increase per year to take care of inflation, and then they would like, they wanted four renewals, but we advised them that that was not possible, that most it could do would be 20 years, you know? But with 3% compounded for 20 years, it gets up to be a fairly decent figure, you know? And type of thing. And, but, the other thing is, that I think that the plus to us is, that this will give you, if you do happen to use Horizon, it'll give you much better reception than what you've had in the past, plus the fact that you will also have available to you 4G coverage, which is a heck of a lot faster than what you might have now. And so I think it's a plus if it can be brought about in a way that's not detrimental in any way to the town. I talked to Dennis Butcher about the antenna, and he assured me, and the engineers, that it's not a problem to have it up there, that type of thing. They're asking for, I think, now, an agreement from now till the end of the year, or until you reach the other long-term agreement, so that they can go on and begin surveying and doing, making certain studies that they might need to do, that involve federal regulations and so forth and so on. And I think right now, what they're looking for is that Resolution, from y'all, saying that they can have access to the tank itself, or get in, or keep, or whatever, because it's a lock gate, and can have access and digress from it, and to make some studies, I mean now, in the end of the year, and hopefully that might be done, maybe even within the next 30 to 60 days, and maybe it might be, it would be operational soon.
And also, on top of what Mr. Coleman stated, this would be the first venture for Horizon in the town of North Louisiana, also with regards to the water tower.
More than likely, they're telling us that they're going to use whatever we agreed to as a pattern for most of the other towns and all of the towns.
So this is an agreement or a Resolution?
Excuse me.
I wasn't prepared to do the Resolution, we will have that ready.
Yes, we will have to do an Agreement for the end of the year. Are you saying that they need a Resolution or an Agreement?
They would want an Agreement in place to get started, basically to be able to get the key to go onto property, because it is key.
If they're looking for an Agreement that says it's okay for them to come and do the surveys, and have, coming in and out of it, and make plans for making installation.
For the rest, until the rest of the year? Until December 31st?
That's right, not, not exceed December 31st, I think, or either way, what was recommended, we'd say, or until y'all reach a long-term Agreement with them, if it's sooner.
Okay.
Not longer, but if it's sooner.
Okay, I'm entertaining motion. You going second? Let me get out first. I'm entertaining motion to allow Horizon Waters to enter into a Agreement from October the 7th to December 31st, to start the process of seeing how they can utilize an antenna and 4G on the Water Tower. It's an Agreement, and then if we come to an Agreement between now and a Resolution, and a conditional Agreement between now and December 31st, we'll bring it back to the Council.
And just also, happy everybody, you say, we can get better service?
Yes.
Absolutely.
So that's a good point. He moved. Second, all in favor of State, second. By saying aye? Any opposed? So that, that motion carries. Okay, Mr. Coleman, the grant updates?
Can I just talk from here? If you want me to come up for you.
You can talk from there.
All right.
Talk loud.
If I talk loud.
Talk loud.
Basically, the town had asked me if I would come and let's make a report on the activities of the Grant Committee, and that's what we're, what we're attempting to do. And the Grant Committee, Ms. Jenkins is here, and Ms. Jackson is here, Mr. McCowen is also on our committee, as is the Mayor, and Lori is on the committee, and Tony Johnson, and then the engineer, which is Baylor Engineer. And they were supposed to be here tonight, and they're not, and I'm disappointed in that, because they were supposed to bring some things to be passed out, so that as I'm trying to cover this, y'all could be looking at something you can take home with you, show you in more detail. But anyway, I'll try to recover it if best I can, okay? One of the things that we have accomplished since we began working on this is, is last year, we got a $35,000 grant, for which we bought a backup that the town's been using, which is very helpful and very needed. And the, one of the other things that we've done is that we got a grant for $100,000 from Delta Regional Authorities to make some improvements to the sewer treatment plant down there, and the town matched that with $60,000, and that's been completed. There are still some other improvements that need to be made down there to bring it up to optimal operating efficiency. About years ago, when that plant was put in, they didn't wind up with enough funds to complete the project properly, and so they had to kind of gerrymander, pick up and use some of the old stuff out of the old plant in the new plant, and it doesn't operate as well as it should have or could have, but yet still, we still have an answer maybe for that. The other thing is, is that, that we, there was obtained a grant from Louisiana Community Development Block Grant, to put in a water well, which y'all all are aware of, that has been put in, that resulted in about, was about $471,000, and of which the town had to pay, I think it was about $37,000 out of that, of local funds. It's very fortunate that we got that well, because now that we have another well down, if we hadn't had that drill, drill, we'd be in serious, serious trouble, you know? And as some of y'all are probably wary, is there is another well over at Mayfield that was an older well, that because of the alkaline salt, that has eat through the casing and the inter附ite in both. We've had three different companies have looked at it, and said that it's not, we don't believe that it's going to be repairable. There's an outside possibility, maybe a 10% change, that we might get some kind of special approval from the Department of Health and Environmental people, to put a plastic sleeve inside that, but the likelihood of that is somewhat remote. But it is, every opportunity of trying to address that problem of that well going down being looked at and addressed, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. There was a project that we submitted last year, to make improvements to the sewer system down, really in the area that's bounded by Lewis Street, Dutch Town, Pearl Street, West Fourth, from Louisiana Department of Funds, Community Funds, but it wasn't approved. Now, we knew at the time we submitted it, that it would be questionable, but the situation that we got into, that we understand that there were nine grants submitted, six of them got approved, all six of them. The town came up with about $50,000 matching funds, which we did not have at that time. So we didn't commit that, because we didn't have it, but we know that in the future, we could resubmit it, and if we come up with matching funds like the other people did, then we would likely be able to receive that grant in the near future. We did a utility rate evaluation report, and Baylor Engineer did that, and that report has been done, and at no cost to the Town of Homer, the grant that we get from DEQ will pay the town whatever the cost of that was. This last year, we got a grant for about $36,000, but we only got $36,000 from Louisiana Community, Legav funds, we call them, and they bought weed eaters, and mowed equipment, and repaired roofs and some stuff, I think, and that was at no cost to the Town of Homer. The other thing that has happened that from our, from that committee, was that there are two groundwater tanks over at Mayfield, that receive water from the west, and then there is chlorine put in the water to kill any germs or environmental stuff, but it has to be held supposedly in there for about 30, 30 minutes in order to be effective. Those tanks are supposed to, according to the people that make tanks, be supposed to be rehabilitated every 10 years. Those tanks are over 20 years old. When we got some funds together to try to rehabilitate one, which would cost about $20,000, and they went over there and tried to rehabilitate it, clean it up on the inside, scale off of it, they started winding up with pencil-sized holes in almost every foot in the tank, which meant structural integrity was gone. And so the bottom line is, the people that coat the inside of tanks said there's no way they can do that to give us any kind of guarantee. So then the decision was made to seek some funds, and we took some funds that we were going to use to run a line up the Lions Hill Road, we took some funds that we were going to, maybe run a line out Dutch Town Road, you know, approve the line out there. We got permission to use those funds to help replace that water tank over there, and then the Town Council voted to also supplement that with some funds from industrial funds, which is permitted to do that under that, where that money collectively is for water, and this is what that was for. And that job was completed in July 23rd of this year. So we do have one good tank over there, and of course, we're still, we're going to have to address the idea of what we're going to do about the other tank, it's just as bad as the one we just replaced. New water metering system, we've been working on that for about a year, year and a half. It is being bid out at present time, and it looks like that DEQ was allowing about $900,000, and it may well come under that $900,000 goal. And if so, then we may can use those extra funds with their permission, if they're qualified in, or to do the work that we have not been able to do at the wastewater treatment plant. But, you know, that's the two things. The other thing is, is we got approved through the DEQ improvements to the sewer lines, the van holes, and a program that will let them take water from the sewer plant down there and use it to water the golf courses and the water park, the ballpark, and as well as put some monitoring equipment on the system, whereby the engineers, as well as the local town officials, and/or whoever is working with the sewer system, can monitor it on their computers externally, and if something goes wrong, try to get it fixed before it pairs up more stuff, number two, for many, for many things. That grant is for $2,600,000, a million of it, we don't have to pay back. The million, million six that we talked about, that is, has to be paid back, is over a 20-year period at an interest rate of .95, which is probably risked in inflation, type of thing. And so that has been bid out, and is in the process of being done and approved, hopefully before the end of the year, some of the work will begin. I think one of the companies that's working on the sewer lines is already in town. Town Hall, I'm trying to be brief, but y'all had me to do it, you know? Is, is that Baylor didn't come up with a figure of about $500,000 that it would cost to redo the City Hall, and complex, and was what they come up with, and as a result of that, last year, your legislators came up with $150,000, of which the town had to come up with a 25% extra, $50,000, to make improvements to the City Hall. But the guy that came up from capital outlay told us that if y'all will, please wait, we're going to try to get you some more money next year, about something necessary, is that okay? So you can kind of do it at all at one time. But in order to do the 150, which would take care of a good portion of roof things that need to be taken care of, is that we got a $26,000 grant from Louisiana Community Fund, and then we filed a claim for the insurance company, which resulted by recent storm, and they give us 20, or allow $24,000, so that 26 and 24 means that that will give us the 50,000 at the time needs to match, the 150 we got from the capital outlay. October of this year, there's $225,000 that has been approved by legislature. If we can get it funded, and if y'all know any legislators, please call them, and encourage them to see that it's funded, because if it's not funded or bonded, we won't get the money, but we're hopeful that it will be. We'll have to come up with a $75,000 match on land, and we will apply for Louisiana Legav money, and they've kind of indicated to us that that would be done. That will leave us with $40,000 that we need, in order not to take it out of general funds. We want to ask that Representative Jefferson, if he will, to try to put $40,000 in there for us, in House Bill 1, which will be that 35 plus the 40, will give us our $75,000 match, so we can get all this, that was just done, all the handicap accessible stuff, and et cetera, that was being required, to be done without any requirement of funds out of the grant fund. And the, many questions about the DH Department, DHH has told us the old tank up there, I call it JC Park up there, Joe Mike, Joe Mike Park, that the old tank, the old sewer tank had to come down. And so we got a grant to, to take that tank down, and was for $35,000, and we've gotten indications that probably going to cost less than 20, and they told us that they had worked with us on the other 15, and we'll use it for any other project on the portable drinking water side. And so that's where we stand on that. Lions Hill Bridge, y'all asked me about, it's a $400,000 project, and I talked to the gentleman down there, and he said that that's more or less finished, and will be bid on January the 14th of 2015.
January 14th, 2015?
Different, 15, it's good, yes. January the 14th, 2015. Now, that's when it's going to be bid, you know, and it'll probably have most of the year completed, but in the meantime, go down there and look at that bridge, or if you look at that sign on it, I think it says very, very low limit, which means that school buses, or ride trucks, or anything couldn't go over it, you know? And so I think, when y'all write in that letter to the Public Jury, they made it their number one priority of all the off bridge programs in the parish for us, for the town. And so a big thank you to the Public Jury, I think would certainly be in order, and type of thing.
Jane, didn't the school board, didn't the school board do something about the buses, not letting them go over the bridge, or that, I can't remember, didn't they do something?
We alerted them to the situation, and how they addressed it, I can't tell you.
I can't remember either, but they did. They voted on something.
Well, they avoided to support the town, requesting it.
Maybe that's what it was.
And that was why it was expedited, so normally when you put one in under that off, off the bridge program, and really what that is, that it means that they get a certain amount of money each year, to take, to repair bridges that are not on state roads, that's why they call it off bridge, you know, off road bridge, and this is not on state road, and so that's why it was, but Public Jury is really the one that caused the shock on that, they're the one that asked, and they made it their number one project, I think, two years ago. And so we've been doing all we could to get it done.
Is there much more, Mr. Coleman?
Say.
Is there much more?
Well, all I know to tell you is there is a grant that we're applying for, for USDA to improve the freshwater sign, and that's not been completed yet, maybe about next meeting and two, we'll inform you of that, but that would involve repainting the blue tank up there, include taking care of the other water treatment, what's over at Mayfield that hadn't been done, and many other things, mostly replacing all lines over 25 or 30 years old in the town, and now we got some that's 70 or 80 years old that need to be replaced, and that's nothing to say.
Thank you for that grant update. The reason why that grant update was, as lame as it was, because the Grant Committee meets, and there's an agenda of like 15 to 20 items, trying to better the environment and the infrastructure here in Town of Homer. I appreciate the Grant Committee and their due diligence of serving, and helping to retrieve all these grants, and contacting the municipal representatives and senators, and once again, for making those meetings. Thank you, Grant Committee, and thank you so much to Mr. Coleman, for sharing with Town of Homer, your free volunteer time. I was saying, let me add that, free volunteer time. I'll proceed to go to executive session, Mr. Coleman is giving us the last updates, I won't give you any more. At this time, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
Councilwoman.
All in favor? Enter into executive session to discuss American Waste Water Contract Unlawed in Litigation. I have a question, thanks for saying it. State it, regarding Frank Evans, and fully knows, I'm going to check his recommendations for those two titles.
In regards to Officer Lowes, in any investigation involving the FBI, I'm still, my recommendation stands, suspension without pay, until I can get some closure from him. In regards to Frank Evans, still stands, suspension without. In regards to Frank Evans, still stands, suspension without pay pending a hearing for the council. However, we had numbers here, but every time we have one, someone else comes up, and someone else come up about some video tonight that we gotta do a little more research on. So my recommendation stands, Mr. Mayor, if that's not correct, that Frank Evans stay on suspension without pay pending some more investigation into the outcome. Once we get that into the, into the outcome of the disposition of his, uh, suspension until we get to rest of the video, if we can get it.
And let it be known, these recommendations are from Chief Police Superintendent. No action this time will be taken. We will pin, we will take action, we will give this final recognition. There be no other business. I intend on to announce that, uh, my second, may he settle.